Everyone, welcome to the virtual ceremony for the mayor, city attorney, and the Seventy-Third San Diego City Council. Per Executive Order Twenty-nine dash twenty, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, and the council members will be participating virtually, and no members of the public will be in attendance at this meeting in interest of public health and safety. In addition, this means being televised and live streamed on the city's website. This meeting of the city council is hereby convened. All the council members are present except Councilmember Chris Ward. The Honorable Chris Ward will be joining us later on this meeting, not as a council member, but as the newly elected and sworn-in Assemblymember of the Seventy-Eighth District. The Honorable Council President Pro Tem Barbara Bree will be now leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Great. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the National Anthem, which will be sung by fifteen-year-old rising star Emily Said Valdista. Thank you. That was beautiful. City Clerk Elizabeth Malin will now deliver the invocation.
Thank you.
And we may now be seated.
May those of us gathered today assist in this transition of leadership. May we recognize those who served in the past with gratitude and look to those who will serve in the future with hope. May we commit ourselves to the democratic process by actively participating in local government and supporting our elected representatives as they work to lead in ways that foster the well-being of our individual communities as well as the city as a whole. May we take inspiration from those who have dedicated themselves to public service and look to the concept of the greater good as a guide to our thoughts and actions. Let all of us gathered here this morning use this ceremonial beginning to reflect on our potential to be active participants in affecting and supporting governance that recognizes the value and promotes the well-being of all people.
Thank you, Liz. We may all now be seated. Joining me virtually this morning is the Honorable Mayor Kevin Faulkner and also my esteemed colleagues on the city council. The Honorable Council President Pro Tem Barbara Bree, Council District One. The Honorable Councilmember Jennifer Campbell, Council District Two. The Honorable Chris Ward, Assemblymember and former councilmember from Council District Three. The Honorable Monica Montgomery Stepp from Council District Four. The Honorable Mark Kersey from Council District Five. The Honorable Chris Kate from Council District Six. The Honorable Scott Sherman from Council District Seven. And the Honorable Vivian Moreno from Council District Eight. Also joining us this morning are the Honorable Mara Elliott, City Attorney, Elizabeth Malin, City Clerk, Andrea Teflin, Independent Budget Analyst, and Amy Fawcett, Interim Chief Operating Officer. We are honored to have so many distinguished guests viewing this proceedings today. While everyone is a VIP, I would like to take a brief moment to recognize and applaud all of our regional elected officials, designateees, and leaders of our military and international communities, including the bi-national mega-region, joining us this morning via City TV or online. We will now commence with our ceremony, but before each yeet oath of office is taken, I would like to invite each of the outgoing elected officials to share some brief comments or presentations reflecting on their years of service. First, I would like to acknowledge Mayor Kevin Faulkner for his fifteen years of service and dedication to the citizens of San Diego. First, as the councilmember of District Two, and then as a mayor, I will invite him to share some brief comments at this time.
It's been the honor of a lifetime to serve as your mayor for the past six years. I took office at a time when City Hall had lost sight of what's important: you, your family, and your community. Government had become too much about the politicians and not enough about the people. So I pledged to restore integrity, to put our neighborhoods first, to bring our city together, and to strive for one San Diego, a place where every San Diegan in every community has the opportunity to succeed. Together, we made San Diego a city of hope, of innovation, and of opportunity. And I'm so proud of what we have accomplished. We built and improved parks, libraries, fire stations, and recreation centers across the city with a focus on neighborhoods that have been left behind for far too long. We expanded economic and educational opportunities by tutoring thousands of students and keeping libraries open longer than ever before. We rebuilt our dwindling police ranks and kept San Diego one of the safest big cities in America. We adopted a landmark climate action plan and reduced greenhouse gas emissions by nearly a quarter. We kept our finances strong, our reserves healthy, and our budgets balanced and created a government that's as innovative as the people it represents. We brought data transparency and customer service to all that we do. Every day, I was proud to wake up and work for you. I was honored to help lead the fight for LGBTQ equality as co-chair of Mayors for the Freedom to Marry. I was energized as I partnered with my colleagues to secure federal funds that will finally clean up the Tijuana River Valley. I was inspired to work with our region to create a vision for a central mobility hub that connects the trolley to the airport. And I remain passionate about the importance of our relationship with Mexico and about sharing our story of bi-national success with the world. The day I took my oath of office, I vowed to you that San Diego would write its comeback story. Together, we have written it. And now, San Diego is leading. San Diego was the first big city in the U.S. to move to one-hundred percent renewable power. San Diego is the largest city in America to switch to community choice energy. San Diego is the only big city in America to repair more than half of its streets in record time. San Diego has transformed into a place that says yes to housing with bold new reforms. And San Diego is the only big city in California where homelessness is actually decreasing. Together, we have restored integrity to government, respect to our neighborhoods, and dignity to our city. Because when we set aside politics and lead with pride, there is nothing we can't do. And to that end, I would like to thank my staff, both former and current, our executive leadership, and each of our amazing city employees. Take it from me, these are the people who get it done for San Diego. We need these folks, especially in difficult times like these. So my fellow San Diegans, please join me in lending our public employees and our mayor, our city attorney, and our city council our support, our prayers, and our trust. Our new mayor, Todd Gloria, is a colleague and a friend. And he knows, like I do, that the work of our city is never done. And I know that he has what it takes to overcome today's challenges and keep San Diego leading well into the future. Finally, I would like to thank you. Thank you for the great honor and privilege of serving as your mayor. As a lifelong Aztec, a one-time park-and-wreck board volunteer, and a proud father and husband, San Diego has made me who I am. It has been a journey I never expected and an experience I will always hold dear. So thank you, and I look forward to continuing to work alongside you for many years to come.
Thank you again for your service and for your comments. The fabulous mayor-elect, Todd Gloria, will be now joining us virtually to receive his oath of office. I would like to congratulate him for his election to serve the people of San Diego. The Honorable Senator President Pro Tem Tony Atkins will be administering his ceremonial oath of office to Mayor-elect Gloria.
The Honorable Todd Gloria, are you ready?
I am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Todd Gloria, do solemnly swear...
I, Todd Gloria, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation...
...without any mental reservation...
...or purpose of evasion...
...or purpose of evasion...
...that I will well and faithfully discharge...
...that I will well and faithfully discharge...
...the duties upon which I'm about to enter...
...the duties upon which I'm about to enter...
Congratulations, Mayor Gloria.
I'd like to start this morning by thanking my parents, Linda and Phil, my brother Ty and his beautiful family, my incredible partner Adam, my staff, both past and present, all of the City of San Diego employees, and all of the people who mentored me and supported me over the years, most especially Congresswoman Susan Davis, my friend, Senate President Pro Tem Tony Atkins, and of course, our trailblazer who broke San Diego's rainbow ceiling, State Senator Christine Kehoe. Thank you all so very much. My fellow San Diegans, it is with pride that I stand before you today as the thirty-seventh mayor of our city. I'm humbled by your support. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, and I am hopeful about the future of our city. Today is more than an inauguration day for me, our city attorney, and our new council members. Today is a day that marks a new chapter in San Diego's history. Today is the day that we start building a San Diego that truly is for all of us. As a kid growing up in Claremont, I didn't see people who looked like me leading practically anything, let alone the eighth-largest city in the United States. But today, I stand in front of you as the first person of color and LGBTQ person to ascend to our city's highest office. This is a testament to what we all know. San Diego is a unique place with incredible people where anything is possible. It is the birthplace of California and a bridge between two nations. It's the home of artistic creativity, groundbreaking innovation, and research that changes the world. It is the place where the son of a hotel maid and a gardener, a Native American Filipino Puerto Rican Dutch gay guy, has just become your mayor. Now is the time to make certain that the doors of opportunity are opened wider for anyone who's willing to work hard. To accomplish that, let's be done with saying that we're just America's finest city. It's time for us to dare to be a truly great city. A city where your zip code doesn't determine your destiny. A city that embraces what makes us unique and celebrates who we are. A city that tackles major challenges head-on and doesn't let distractions get in the way. No more San Diego specials. San Diego is a big city. It's time we act it like it. So over the next one-hundred days, we will dispense with the small issues that past leaders have struggled to resolve so that we can focus on the biggest problems facing our city. We will be rolling out an aggressive strategy to address the worsening public health crisis in COVID-19, the economic crisis that is impacting San Diego's families, small businesses, and our city budget, the housing and homelessness crisis that has become even more dire. My team and I are moving swiftly and decisively to protect our most vulnerable and will do it with the long-term goal of building a more resilient city in the process. It's not enough to get things back to normal. Normal wasn't and won't be good enough. If we dream big, work together, and believe in San Diego, we can accomplish anything. We will change the narrative, not just for the privileged few, but for everyone, especially those who have traditionally felt unheard. My fellow San Diegans, it's the dawn of a new era. We will recover and build back better and stronger from COVID-19. We will stand up for workers and create good-paying local jobs that bring neighborhood improvements to all corners of our city. We will center racial justice and equity, not just in public safety, but in everything we do, recognizing that Black lives matter. And we will fully and faithfully implement our climate action plan to ensure that the city that we love is here for generations to come. I believe in us, San Diego. I know who we are and who we can be. I'm so proud to be the mayor of this great city, but I'm even more excited about what we can accomplish together. Because together, I know we will build a San Diego for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gloria. City Attorney Mara Elliott will now join us virtually. To receive her oath of office, I would like to congratulate her on her election to continue to serve the people of San Diego. City Clerk Elizabeth Malin will be administering her oath of office to the City Attorney Elliott.
Thank you. Mara Elliott, it is my honor and my pleasure to administer your oath of office in accordance with the laws of the State of California and the Charter of San Diego. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mara Elliott...
...do solemnly swear...
...do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend...
...that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemy...
...against all enemy...
...foreign and domestic...
...foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation...
...without any mental reservation...
...or purpose of evasion...
...or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duty...
...discharge the duty...
...upon which I'm about to enter...
...upon which I am about to enter...
Congratulations.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for administering the oath of office and for organizing what I hope will be our last virtual ceremony. As I was being sworn in, I thought about the sacrifices my family has made over the years: my husband Greg and our two boys Garrett and Graham. Families never get enough credit for the support that they provide to elected officials. I couldn't have done it without them. I hope my boys, who were just one in four when I started working at the City Attorney's Office, will be proud that their mother was the first woman to serve as San Diego City Attorney. I also want to thank the exceptional attorneys and staff on my team who work hard every day to make San Diego a better place to live. The voters made it clear that they appreciate what you do. Today, we begin a new era in our city. We welcome a new mayor, a new council, and with them, new hope for our future. I worked with our new mayor, Todd Gloria, when he served as interim mayor in 2013. I saw him lead the city through a time of crisis, and I know he shares my commitment to protecting public health and safety, promoting equity, and ensuring the sustainability of our city. I'm ready to get things done with you, Mr. Mayor. Our five new council members spent the last two years engaging with their communities and arrived here with fresh energy and fresh ideas. My team and I, and especially our new Assistant City Attorney for Council Relations, are eager to work with each of you. Here from now, we may look back on this as a pivotal moment for our city. Forces may conspire to divide us, but we know that we are at our best when we are at our most inclusive. Our greatness is our people, diverse, opinionated, old and young, but all of us invested in our collective success. When I was sworn in four years ago, I pledged to make protecting San Diego my first priority. That pledge was made in front of a thousand people. Today, I renew it while speaking to a screen. This pandemic has only affirmed that commitment. Every day, we wrestle with challenges that the coronavirus has created for vulnerable San Diegans. COVID-19 has increased the stressors that contribute to domestic violence, making the work of our Family Justice Center more urgent and important. I am proud that our staff and community partners seamlessly continued their work to help victims safely escape abusers and heal. COVID-19 has exacerbated mental health struggles for many. During the first six months of the pandemic, the number of gun-related suicide threats nearly tripled. Our nationally-recognized Gun Violence Restraining Order Program has proven essential in protecting the public during this global health crisis. And COVID-19 has isolated seniors and dependent adults who could easily slip through the cracks. In response, we heightened our crackdown on substandard housing. We invested in personal protective equipment so that our investigators could continue to report to the field, rescue victims, connect them to housing, and hold those who abuse them and exploit them accountable. Home should be a safe place for everyone. As we look ahead to a second term, my team and I are ready to continue the work we started four years ago. We committed to strengthening these programs and ensuring their survival beyond my term. While we continue to pull together and weather the pandemic, I'm more enthusiastic than ever about our work to make San Diego safer, more inclusive, and a livable city for everyone. I welcome my new colleagues and I thank them for their commitment to public service. Now let's get to work.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney Elliott.
Thank you.
I would now like to acknowledge Council President Pro Tem Barbara Bree for her years of service and dedication to the citizens of District One and all San Diegans. It is my great pleasure to invite her to share some brief comments at this time.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President. My tenure on the city council ends today, but my love for our city will never end. Four years ago, I stood before you as a first-time elected official. I had never run for anything, except maybe the bus. I came to City Hall with the goal of serving District One's constituents in an open and transparent way and to keep San Diego safe, clean, and prosperous. What I've learned is that San Diegans want a government that listens to and works for them, a government that is fair and embraces an exciting future, a stronger voice in shaping that future, especially in their own neighborhoods. Because of COVID, this is a very difficult and challenging time for our city. That's why we're here today on Zoom and not in person. Many of our families are suffering through no fault of their own, and the next mayor and council will have hard choices to make. Yet for the long term, I'm optimistic about San Diego's future: our growing tech and biotech industries, our beautiful natural environment, our diverse population, our vibrant arts sector, our location on the border, and our great universities. And I intend to remain a part of that vibrant future. As I reflect today, I am perhaps most proud of the legacy I leave: a legacy of fighting for what I believe in, of being the first elected official to oppose Soccer City, my earliest experience with a backroom deal at City Hall, and then to support SDSU West, the most transformative project in our region in decades. I hope... I'm also proud of demanding accountability and transparency regarding the 101 Ash Street purchase, dubbed the city's worst-ever real estate deal. I hope the next council and mayor will continue to investigate the Ash Street transaction and find a solution without filing more costly lawsuits. I also fought for community choice energy and the enforcement of our existing law against short-term rentals, which is unfinished business and an important component of housing preservation at a time we have a housing shortage. In District One, we secured approval for two new fire stations, one of which opened a few weeks ago, a hawk traffic signal and new sidewalk on Torrey Pines Road, a joint-use park with San Diego Unified at Stanley Park in University City, restriping and slurry seal of Delmar Heights Road, initiation of the Los Penasquitos Lagoon Restoration Project, traffic control measures in Carmel Valley, and many more neighborhood improvements that impact our daily quality of life. When you tackle ambitious goals, you can expect a lot of pushback and roadblocks along the way. way, and I did encounter my share. But you can also redefine what is possible, and we started to do that. For that, I owe a lot of thank yous. There are too many individuals to thank, but I want to thank my staff, my amazing staff, who were on call 24 hours a day. I also want to call out my family. First, my husband Neil, thank you for your love and support and for being a great cook. And thank you to my two daughters, Sarah and Rachel. Thank you for supporting me every step of my political path, even when you saw the negativity and the personal attacks. And thank you to my colleagues on the council. I miss seeing you in person. And a special thank you to the residents of District One and all the people of San Diego who proudly call it home. You are my inspiration. And finally, I want to congratulate Joe LaCava, who will represent District One well. Thank you all for an unforgettable four years.
Thank you again for your service and for your incredible words. Councilmember-elect Joe LaCava will now join us virtually to receive his oath of office. I would like to congratulate you on his election to serve the people of District One. His wife, Laureen LaCava, will be administering the oath of office to Councilmember-elect LaCava.
Please repeat after me. I, Joe LaCava.
I, Joe LaCava.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties of which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Well, thank you. Good morning. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude. Thank you to my wife Laureen, my partner, and the mother to our two intelligent and independent daughters, and a true public servant as a Third Rock Elementary teacher for 25 years. Laureen, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement, and thank you for your support and patience. I'm certainly going to need it with my new assignment here. Thank you to my immigrant parents for instilling in me the values of hard work and giving back to the community, and for giving me the opportunity to thrive in this city that I love. Special thanks to Council President Pro Tem Bree for providing me with the smooth transition so I can hit the ground running for District One. And to our outgoing council members and mayor, thank you for your service. Finally, thank you to District One for giving me the honor and responsibility to represent you on city council. I do not take this role lightly. I'm here to serve you and will not lose sight of that commitment. As for today, I want to congratulate all the new council members being sworn in. I'm privileged to share this moment with you. I look forward, and I'm eager to work side by side with all my council colleagues, the mayor, and the city attorney. As we take office, we continue to be confronted by a virus that has placed an unimaginable burden on our friends and neighbors, ravaged our city's economy, and threatened our city's progress. Successful navigation of these uncertain pandemic waters depends on all of us working together. As for this council, we must lead from our values and our strengths. To thrive as a whole, we must allow each council member to succeed and to serve their district and our city to their fullest ability. Fellow council members, I'm standing by to be your partner, your ally, and your champion. So, it seems District One is a bit partial to engineers. I'm an engineer by education and trade, but also by communication style. I don't mean to be technical and into weeds, but sometimes you will find me in the tall grass. I mean to be clear and concise, and sometimes, when the moment calls for it, blunt. So let's talk about priorities. I have to: work with and be responsive to my district and get things done. We have no shortage of challenges ahead of us. For today, I will discuss just four. Let's take care of our small businesses. I will work to redefine how we live, work, and play in our city, beginning with District One. We can be the model for the nation in embracing our new reality. Also, protect our core city services. Given our budget difficulties, I will work with city leaders and advocates in scouring the budget for savings, securing state and federal relief, and ensuring our budget is equitable. I will be supporting public safety and implementing Measure B. I recognize that public safety is complex. Racial equity and economic justice must be achieved for all residents to feel safe. We start with Measure B, as well as ensure we are sending the right professionals when there is a call for help. I'll close with my personal passion: achieving our Climate Action Plan and climate equity goals, preparing our city for future climate impacts, and meeting environmental mandates. On climate, we must not hesitate. Our city's health and economic vitality depend on it. To my colleague, as you identify your priorities, I'm ready to be your partner, your ally. As we set our work plan for the council, let us work together to ensure that every San Diegan in every community has the opportunity to enjoy what our great city has to offer. I close with the simple words of Hal Harvey: "Respect science, respect nature, respect each other." My job begins here and now. I am ready. My team is ready, and I thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember LaCava, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I would now like to acknowledge former councilmember Chris Ward, now Assemblymember Ward, for his years of service and dedication to the residents of District Three and all San Diegans. Although he's no longer a councilmember, as a courtesy, we would like to invite him to share some words with San Diego.
Well, thank you, Council President Gomez, and, you know, sincere, and hello to my former colleagues on the city council, and of course, greetings to the public watching today's meeting. The dedication and drive of this body was an inspiration, and I have been honored to work closely with each of you for these last four years. We're living in times of multiple crises, and we bear the weight of the stress our constituents are facing. We do our best to be helpful in the moment and advance longer-lasting improvements for public services and goals. There is a lot more to do, but now that I have been sworn in as the representative for the 78th District in the California State Assembly, I've had time to reflect on the work that we have all done together to implement real solutions for some of our biggest challenges of the city. Four years ago, we were faced with the largest census numbers of unsheltered homeless. The council approved my request to form the city's Select Committee on Homelessness and join with the Regional Task Force on the Homeless, an organization I had the honor of chairing to revise policy and promote new models of shelter, support, and housing solutions. The work we did here updated our city and regional systems of care and identified new funding streams to result in more San Diegans resolving their homelessness. Improving data systems, outreach, training professionals, coordination between agencies, and so much more is foundational. The Community Action Plan on Homelessness that this council approved is underway and has the roadmap to sustain meaningful, long-term progress to reduce and prevent homelessness. Necessarily related, we have been serious about housing and finding pathways to say yes and make projects better, to reduce barriers to demanding more affordable mix, and to making sure that the labor from San Diego workers is respected and is a part of the solution. As the former chair of the Economic Development and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, I ensured this council prioritized city support for small businesses, improved San Diego's tourism and marketing district programs to include neighborhood businesses, elevated co-ops, and passed San Diego's first equal pay ordinance, making us the largest city in the nation to ensure equal pay for equal work. And together, we acknowledged the very real dangers of our climate crisis and accelerated a path to 100% clean energy while staying ahead of goals under our Climate Action Plan. To enhance zero-waste efforts and reduce pollution in our waterways, San Diego passed my ordinance to make us the largest city in California to ban styrofoam and reduce single-use plastics. Now amid a global pandemic, we jumped into action to provide immediate relief under extreme circumstances. Together, we worked with hard-hit San Diegans to expand childcare services and opportunities for essential workers, established San Diego's Emergency Rental Assistance Program so thousands would stay in their homes, and provided support for business owners through a new Small Business Relief Fund. I authored a paid sick leave or guaranteed all workers the ability to take two weeks off should COVID-19 impact their lives, and an emergency recall and retention order to provide them in certainty for longtime workers in some of our hardest-hit industries. Now, this may only be a sampling of policy work that we have done, and it doesn't include the dozens of neighborhood projects completed or the countless constituent requests for service that we were to help with, but it was all possible due to the support and advocacy and a very strong District Three team. So I want to take a moment to thank that team. Molly, Lucas, Brian, Joy, Kathleen, Brett, Ty, Brittany, Tyler, DJ, Chloe, and Pam, thank you from the heart, thank you. Without your support and dedication to our communities, none of what we would have been possible. I also want to thank my partner Tom, my beautiful daughter Betty, my son Billy, for their support in allowing me to be able to be a member and be able to do this job. I want to thank the constituents of District Three and the many, many community members who take on leadership roles in our neighborhoods to also make a difference, who have partnered with my team to make advancements. There is more to do, but I am excited and optimistic by those who are taking office and who I know come into service with sincere goodwill to advocate for better decisions that reflect the needs of which we are asked. I give a special shout-out to Councilmember Whitburn, my councilmember, and I look forward to working with Mayor Gloria, City Attorney Elliott, and all of the council as your next assembly member to ensure a more equitable and sustainable future for our city and our region. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I have loved this work, and I love our city.
Thank you again for your service and for your words. Councilmember-elect Stephen Whitburn will now join us virtually to receive his oath of office. I would like to congratulate you on your election to serve the people of District Three. Our Trailblazer, the Honorable Christine Kehoe, will be administering the ceremonial oath of office to Councilmember-elect Whitburn.
Thank you, Councilmember Gomez, and congratulations, Stephen. I'm honored to be part of the ceremony. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephen Whitburn.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Again, congratulations, Stephen, and I wish you all success during your time in office.
Thank you very much, Senator Kehoe. I can't forget to tell you what an honor it is for me to have you administer my oath of office. It is such a wonderful way to begin serving the 3rd District and our city. When Senator Kehoe was elected to this same seat back in 1993, she was San Diego's first elected official from the LGBT community. It is due to her hard work and dedication and years of service with distinction that she was able to pave the way for other members of the LGBT community to serve as council members for the 3rd District after her. And they are all here today. They include our Senate President Pro Tem, Tony Atkins, our incoming mayor, Todd Gloria, and most recently, our newest assembly member for the 78th District, Chris Ward. As I take my place as the fifth council member in this lineage, I am determined to uphold the standard that my predecessors have set. This morning, I have the privilege of joining returning councilmembers Jen Campbell and Monica Montgomery Stepp and Chris Kate and Vivian Moreno, and it is an honor to be in the same incoming class with councilmembers Joe LaCava, Marty Van Willpert, Raul Campio, and Sean Elo Rivera. As I look at my colleagues and our mayor, I see an historic moment for our city. Starting today, we have a city government that is more aligned on the issues than any in recent memory. We have an opportunity to advance past the us-versus-them mentality that has prevailed in San Diego for so long. We have an opportunity to accomplish more and do more good for the people of San Diego than any city council before us. I look forward to working together with each of my eight colleagues, our mayor, and our top-notch city employees to achieve our potential on behalf of the people we serve. Most of all, I look forward to working together with my team. I am proud to say that each and every single member of the 3rd District staff is a talented and dedicated leader who will serve our city well. Our city is counting on us to be at the top of our game. We have a health crisis, an economic crisis, a homelessness crisis, a housing affordability crisis, and a crisis of confidence among many in our community who have never been treated equitably. We have a hard task ahead of us, but if there were ever a city government that is up to the challenge, it is this one. We can't do it alone. If we are to make the best, most fully informed decisions, we must draw upon the tremendous amount of knowledge that we have in this city. I look forward to working with neighborhood residents who know their communities better than anyone, our business community who can help us grow this economy and create good jobs, our labor community who can help us ensure those good job-support working families, and our environmental community who can help us ensure a good quality of life for future generations. I remember being a young boy in the 1970s and watching the evening news every night with my parents amid the Vietnam War and Watergate and demonstrations for equal rights. I would listen to them comment on those stories. I learned early on that we wanted the fighting to end. We wanted our elected officials to be honest, and we wanted all people to have the same opportunities. I am so grateful to have inherited these values from my parents Merrill and Diane, who are watching from New York, my brother Mark in Texas, and my sister Elizabeth, who is in Maryland. It is their love and support that has led me to this opportunity, and I send them my love and appreciation this morning. Today, as I join my new council colleagues, I am inspired by those lessons that I learned as a young boy. This will be a terrific city council with the sophistication to rise above fighting, the integrity to operate with honesty, and the determination to make San Diego the great, inclusive, and equitable city that we know it can be. It is a privilege to begin my service to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitburn, and congratulations. I would now like to acknowledge Councilmember Mark Kersey for his years of service and dedication to the residents of District Five and all San Diego. I would like to invite him to share some words to San Diego.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning, everybody. I'm going to be brief here. Most importantly, I want to thank my family for putting Most importantly, I want to thank my family for putting up with all this for the last eight years, including many nights and weekends of activities, at least for seven years of those eight. My girlfriend, Allie, my son Tyler, who was just a small fry when I got elected and is now a freshman in high school, as well as my parents for all their inspiration. I want to thank my amazing staff, who, as most of us know, do most of the hard work around here. I want to thank our fantastic city clerk, our IBA, and their great staff for all the support they provide us. I want to thank city staff for the partnership in actually getting things done. And I want to thank all my colleagues, both past and present, for working with me on various issues for the last eight years. I want to extend my best wishes to my former colleague and our new mayor, Todd Gloria, I know he's going to do a great job, and to my successor, Marty Von Wilpert, who's going to represent District 5 here very, very capably. And I want to extend my best wishes of luck for the entire new city council. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people of the 5th Council District, and I want to thank them for their trust and support for the last eight years. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and for your words. Councilmember-elect Marty Von Wilpert will now join us virtually to receive her oath of office. I would like to congratulate you on your election to serve the people of District 5. The Honorable James Graves Jr., Judge of the U.S. Court of Appeals, Fifth Circuit, will administer the ceremonial oath of office to Councilmember-elect Von Wilpert.
It is an honor that I have this opportunity to administer the oath of office to Marty Von Wilpert. Marty, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, Marty Von Wilpert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. That's actually the second time that Judge Graves has given me an oath. I remember the first time I wasn't standing in front of your desk in Mississippi when I became a law clerk for your chambers. So thank you, everyone, so much for being here today. Thank you, Judge Graves, for swearing me in and for the dedication to justice you have inspired in me. I also want to thank Councilmember Mark Hershey for his years of public service to this city that we all love so much. I want to thank everyone who helped me get elected, including my campaign staff, volunteers, amazing interns, my friends, my mom and dad, and of course, my former sixth-grade teacher, Judy Key. Thank you to all the newly-elected councilmembers, to our city attorney, and to our incoming mayor. Your big visions for our community give me hope for a bright future. These are challenging times for the city of San Diego and our nation. Today, we are being sworn in remotely and not gathered in person as we normally would. It's a sobering reminder of the pandemic we're facing and must overcome as we begin our terms on the 73rd San Diego City Council. But I know that we can and we will. If my 101-year-old grandfather, who's watching from Denver, Colorado, can adjust to life on Zoom, we can all meet today's challenges, stay united, and get through this together, even if we may be physically apart right now. When I began campaigning, I made a pledge to put people over politics and reject the anger and division that is too often seeped into politics these days, to never lose focus of the values we all share: health, safety, respect, and dignity for all. That pledge has never been more important because in tough times, we need to come together as a community, not drive each other further apart. I've dedicated my life and my career to true service to others, serving in the Peace Corps in Botswana, founding a legal clinic in Mississippi where I had the honor to serve as a law clerk for Judge Graves, and in San Diego as a deputy city attorney pursuing justice for all. And that's the kind of councilwoman I will be. Growing up in Scripps Ranch, I never would have imagined that I would be elected to serve the people of my hometown, but I'm ready to choose unity over division and to make life better for all of San Diego's families. I'll put people over politics to make life better for our small businesses and our families struggling through these difficult times. I'll put unity over division because every San Diegan deserves to be treated with dignity and respect by their government and by the police. I'll put truth and science over false promises and fiction so we save lives and partner with the county in rolling out the coronavirus vaccine that brings me hope. I will work for real solutions to San Diego's tough challenges: reducing homelessness, better protection against wildfires, and addressing our climate crisis. Just like I did as a deputy city attorney, I will protect the taxpayers from waste, fraud, and abuse, and ensure our recovery funds help our workers and our small businesses, not just well-connected corporations. And as a civil prosecutor, you know I will put our public safety first, to protect the vulnerable, to stop gun violence, restore trust between community and police, and ensure every San Diegan knows they can call 911 and be safe. Right now, COVID cases are sadly rising, but with a vaccine on the verge, a bright hope is on the horizon. With a new mayor and a new city council, we have a unique opportunity for creativity, for unity, for new ideas and progress, and not politics as usual. To anyone who may have not voted for me, I am here for you too, and my door will always be open. It doesn't matter to me whose yard sign you had in your front yard. I ran for office to serve all of our families, regardless of party or point of view. To all the San Diegans struggling in this crisis, I will work every day for a safe economic recovery that protects our health and brings back our jobs. To my fellow city councilmembers, I'm so excited to work with you. To our dedicated public employees and courageous frontline responders, I can't wait to work with you to build a better tomorrow. So to meet this moment, let's remember the values that really define who we are: putting people first over politics, putting unity first over division, and no matter what, respect and dignity for all. Working together, I know San Diego's brightest days are ahead. Thank you. Our work starts now.
Thank you and congratulations. Councilmember... Sorry. I would like to now like to acknowledge Councilmember Scott Sherman for his years of service and dedication to the citizens of District 7 and all San Diegans. I will invite him to share some brief comments to us all.
You see him?
We're having trouble with Councilmember Sherman. And we will proceed with Councilmember's oath of office.
Very well. So we will, while we work with technical difficulties of Councilmember Sherman.
My apologies, Councilmember Sherman is back.
Yes, I see him. You may proceed, Councilmember. You're muted.
My apologies, he's still having connectivity issues. He likes to proceed with Councilmember-elect Raoul Campillo. We can return to Councilmember Sherman's comments.
Very well. So while we work with Councilmember Sherman's technical difficulties, we will now begin with Councilmember-elect Raoul Campillo will now be joining us virtually to receive his oath of office. I would like to congratulate you on your election to serve the people of San Diego. His father, Alejandro O. Campillo, will administer his ceremonial oath of office to Councilmember-elect Campillo.
Okay. On behalf of my daughter, my wife, thank you for the opportunity to administer this oath of office to our son. Repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Raoul Armando Campillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Mayor Faulkner, Mayor Gloria, City Attorney Elliott, Council President Gomez, President Pro Tem Bree, fellow councilmembers, Councilmember Sherman, the Honorable Judge Graves, and ladies and gentlemen. We observe today not a victory of one party or one ideology, but a changing of the guard. Those who came before may have been of a different party or of a different time in history, but they served this city for the same reasons we do: in good faith, and as the motto of San Diego calls on us to be: ever vigilant in the pursuit of the common good. We must continue in this way: building bridges rather than drawing lines in the sand, because we have no time to waste. In taking our oath of office, we commit to use our studied judgment and our collective reasoning in a tireless march to resolve our city's needs. Grateful to the people of District 7 for their confidence in me, and knowing full well the challenges ahead, I humbly take the 7th seat on the San Diego City Council. Together with our mayor and our city attorney, this new council, for the first time ever with five new members, must not allow the path to impede us in the pursuit of a better future. To quote Cesar Chavez, "We must have initiative and not be mere imitators." San Diego has more young people than ever. It has more diversity than ever. It has more possibilities than ever, but it also has more to fix than ever. And rightly so, the people of this city want their government to meet this unique moment with innovation and creativity. So let us heed the direction of Cesar Chavez and take initiative on our greatest issues. On housing and homelessness, we must act swiftly as people struggle to find an affordable place to live, or worse, no place at all. To stop climate change, we must act boldly as fires rage and waters rise. To restore the community's trust in their governments, we must ensure that public safety includes shared responsibility, accountability, and equal treatment under the law. On the issue of potholes, I have a simple solution: fill them, move on to the next one, don't ever stop, particularly along Navajo Road, Mission Gorge, Linda Vista Road, and Aerodrive, please. And on the complex issues presented by the coronavirus, we must act scientifically, sensibly, and consistently to protect health and business and all workers regardless of their industry, remembering that every sector of our society has sacrificed, and none more so than our community of healthcare providers. We must also help people keep their homes from looming eviction and help our homeless population into housing to protect our common health and our common well-being as the winter grows colder. Today is also the changing of a guard, not just because of new members, but of young and skilled members. I am proud to be now the youngest member of the council, a representative of a new generation like my colleagues, Sean Elo Rivera, Marty Von Wilpert, and Vivian Moreno, that has come of age over two major worldwide economic crises. I will analyze every shred of evidence and data and speak heart-to-heart with members of the community to develop policies that address the issues head-on. And my parents raised me to value honesty, good judgment, and kindness above all else. And I will be fair in both temperament and decision-making. But as representatives of this new generation of leaders, we are not just ready to work, we are ready to lead. With knowledge, with the knowledge I have from my time as a teacher and as an attorney, and most recently as a deputy city attorney, I will use the power of my office to address the needs across the spectrum of society, across all nine city council districts. The November elections show us that people expect collaboration from their elected officials to produce results, and the people who elected us with such a high voter turnout in the middle of a pandemic did so with this expectation of us. So today, this new council will begin to build a legacy. And in my own district, I look forward to the day where we have two new river parks, more housing along transit that more people can afford, a new thriving campus for San Diego State University, more protection from fires, better-paying jobs, and protection for working families, and repaired infrastructure that improve the safety, traffic, health, and quality of life for our neighborhoods. I thank my campaign team and volunteers, most especially Michelle Krug, for their efforts to see that legacy come to fruition. I thank Councilmember Sherman and his team for their eight years of service to the district and for a very smooth transition. Thank you very much. I thank my incoming staff for being ready and willing to serve the people of District 7 with expertise and energy. I thank my parents, Teresa and Alex, my family and my friends from Colexico to San Diego, Las Vegas to Brooklyn and beyond, my teachers and mentors like Jan Davis and Lou Centani, and friends from the schools I've attended: Vista Grande, Hilldale, Uni High School, and Harvard. And I especially thank my partner Nadia and my brother Alex for teaching me to meet serious challenges with an even stronger spirit. I look forward to working with all of you to renew our city. Right now, many of us feel isolated and alone. On the other side of the coming vaccine, just hopefully a few months away, we will be able to come together again in person. And remember how thankful we are to have each other, even in disagreement, so that we can put our community's needs first, never forgetting that though we are nine districts, we are and must work as one San Diego, holding steadfast to the truth that we are stronger together and that out of many, we are one. Thank you. The ose de bendiga.
Congratulations, Councilmember Campillo. I would now like to go back and acknowledge Councilmember Scott Sherman for his years of service. I will invite him to share some words with San Diego.
Well, thank you, Council President. We moved locations, so hopefully this one works a little bit better. First and foremost, I just wanted to say thank you to all my colleagues, you know, past and present. It's been an honor working with all of you. I wanted to thank all the different departments and city staff, people on the 10th floor and 11th. The work we've done together over these eight years is what I'm going to miss the most, is being with my work family. So it's bittersweet to have to leave, but most importantly, the biggest thank you I have to give is to my amazing wife, Norma. She stood by my side during this whole thing, and without her assistance and without her backing me, I don't know if we would have been able to get through this. You know, I've been very, very proud to serve the residents of San Diego for the last eight years and the residents of District 7. for the last eight years and the residents of District 7. We accomplished a lot of things in the district and a lot of things in the city when it came to accessory dwelling units, movable tiny homes, tiny homes, all the different regulations we did to make it easier to build housing in this city and take away some of the costs the government puts on top of housing that gets passed on to the consumer. Housing is a crisis that we are going to have to deal with with quite some time going forward, and I'm confident that the new council will be able to do that. You know, we've done a lot of things here and I've been very proud of the work that I've done. I've worked with my colleagues where I could and I stood up to some of my colleagues when I thought I should. But most importantly, I'm leaving office with my head held high. You know, I didn't change who I was. I'm the same person now as when I arrived in office. I didn't go with the special interests one way or the other for political expediency. I'm still who I am and will continue to be that way, bringing common sense and solutions to government and proposing those even going forward outside of office here. So it's been a very, very good run here at the City of San Diego. I've been honored to serve and am just overwhelmed by that responsibility that was given to me. And then for my new colleagues that I have now who are staying and for the new ones coming in, I just want you to remember, look, it's not your money at the city. We are stewards of the taxpayers' dollar, the dollars that businesses are sending to the city that are working on razor-thin margins because of the economic times that we're in. Individuals who have a tough time paying their rent, much less their taxes. Make sure that you understand that these decisions going forward are financial decisions put in your hands to look after the best interests of the citizens of District 7 and the citizens of San Diego. Not the special interests, not the different groups who will be knocking at your door telling you where to spend that money. Make those decisions on what you think is best for the entire city, and you will do fine. And to our incoming mayor, I've worked with Todd before. Congratulations on your victory and you did a great job as interim mayor and I think you'll continue to do a great job as the actual mayor this time. So it's been a pleasure, everybody. Look forward to seeing you in the future and enjoy the rest of your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman, for your eight years of service and for your common sense here at City Hall. Congratulations and best wishes in your future. And congratulations to Councilmember Campillo for his excellent comments. I look forward to working with you, sir. I would now like to acknowledge Council President Georgette Gómez for her years of service and dedication to the people of Council District 9 as well as all San Diegans. I'd like to now invite her for her comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's been a great honor and a great privilege to have served as the council member for District 9 for the past four years and as your council president for the past two. I worked to create a local government that is more equitable, more inclusive, more transparent, and more accountable to the people. I'm proud to... I'm proud of what we have achieved by working together to advance new approaches to critical challenges facing all San Diego. In 2017, I released my action, my housing action plan, and we have made great strides in addressing housing and homelessness. What began as a local policy became the GASA Housing Act and a statewide end to discrimination based on source of income. For the first time, we are working to preserve the affordable housing we have. We updated inclusionary housing regulations to build more affordable housing. We made it easier to build accessory dwelling units in tiny homes. And we changed policies to prioritize affordable housing in public-owned excess properties. We invested and expanded expanded a pilot program that went from relying on two social workers to reach out to unsheltered residents in our neighborhoods to a citywide program that will now employ 20 social workers, creating a compassionate process that gets people off the street and into homes. As Chair of the Metropolitan Transit System and on the Board of San Dead, I began to change the culture of the organization and help make transit a genuine priority for our region. As Council President, I led the council in quickly responding to COVID-19 crisis by moving us online and maintaining access for the public. I brought forward and won one of the earliest eviction moratoriums in the state to protect renters and small businesses. I'm proud of helping to create the new Office of Race and Equity in the Community Equity Fund. And we won funding to help bridge the digital divide in low-income communities. Across District 9, we have advanced and completed new longstanding projects, including preserving a library, maintaining tree planting and tree trimming, and increasing park space and improving existing parks, as well as revitalizing Toya's Creek and which stretches throughout the district. I'm proud of what my team and I have done along with my current council members. I want to thank my team for your incredible commitment and your incredible heart for the work of addressing justice, equity, and inclusion in this city. I want to especially also thank my wife, Tráquea Pacheco, for your incredible support in allowing me to do this work. To my new council member, Sean Hilo Rivera, do know that I will always be here to ensure that District 9 receives the best representation. And I know you're going to do incredible work on behalf of the district. To the incoming mayor and council members and to my former colleagues, we know that finding the path forward isn't always easy. But the work that we all have been allowed to represent our residents is truly worthy and take it with great honor. Especially during these difficult times, the residents of San Diego are looking for strong leadership. They are expecting bold action to make our city more just and equitable. And I know you all will do the work on behalf of San Diego. So with that, with great pleasure, I leave you. But I have to say, thank you. I have great gratitude and immense love for all of you. Thank you so much. So with that, I would now like to welcome Councilmember-elect Sean Hilo Rivera, who will be joining us virtually to receive his oath of office. I would like to congratulate you in your election to serve the people in District 9. His wife, Angela Hilo Rivera, will administer the ceremonial oath of office to Councilmember-elect Hilo Rivera.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Please raise your right hand and look you after me. I state your name.
I, Sean Hilo Rivera.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
And I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Good morning. First, thank you to my family, to my mom and dad, my siblings, Robin, Audrey, Daniel, and Natalie. I love you all so much. My wife, Angela, thank you for being my partner in life and in the struggle for justice. I love you so much. To the residents of District 9, thank you for providing me the incredible honor of serving you. The District 9 Council Office will be the community's council office, your council office, unboast, unboast, and unwavering in our commitment to you. The setting for this ceremony tells us much about the moment our city finds itself in. In normal times, my colleagues and I would be packed into a theater surrounded by friends and family to celebrate the occasion. We and our staff would then head to our offices together to begin the jobs our community has hired us to do. Instead, many of us are isolated from family members. There will be no congratulatory hugs from mom, pats on the back from dad, handshake with friends, or huddles with our coworkers. Text messages, phone calls, and Zoom meetings replacing face-to-face moments we would always cherish. And those of us entering office today are the lucky ones. At this moment, there are thousands of San Diegans unable to go to work, small business owners terrified that this current stay-at-home order may be the end of the dream that they have worked so hard to turn into reality. Servers, salespeople, and stylists seeing the busiest season of the year vanish one day at a time. Thousands more are worried sick about friends and family members hospitalized by the virus, unsure when or if they will see their loved ones face-to-face again. Most tragic are the thousands mourning the loss of loved ones. Mothers, fathers, siblings, and children who will never again share special moments with the special people they've lost. Time and time again, 2020 has been referred to as unprecedented. However, I would argue that while it has been an incredibly difficult year for many San Diegans, the challenges of 2020 are not unprecedented, but rather all too typical. A system designed to divide communities and create inequality has produced a San Diego where economic inequality and health problems are the norm. That is why I believe the challenge for those of us entering office today is not to return things to normal. No, normal is not good enough for our community. We must aim to create a future that is truly unprecedented. Unprecedented would be a reality where quality housing is affordable for all. And Delia, a 35-year resident of City Heights, no longer worries about being priced out of the neighborhood she loves and instead can buy a home and build wealth for her family. Unprecedented would be a reality where every neighborhood is clean and healthy and young leaders like Rosa can rest easy at night knowing San Diego is a global leader in climate justice. Unprecedented would be a reality where all streets are safe and pillars of the community such as Maria could finally stop having to fight so hard to create a transportation system that works for everyone. Unprecedented would be a reality where there is true safety and justice for all. And Ms. Gooch at Hoover High School no longer stresses that one of the students she loves will have their future derailed by a system that sees black and brown youth as walking threats rather than shooting stars. Unprecedented would be a reality where the city embraces the opportunity to create opportunity and youth like Worsan and Sophia are embraced by our city in their effort to make San Diego a city where every young person has what they need to be happy, healthy, and prepared to reach their potential. Unprecedented would be a reality where the playing field is leveled for small business owners like Maxine and Andrew who have worked for years to turn dreams into cafes that strengthen our community and provide jobs. Unprecedented would be a reality where every worker is protected and young workers like Yuzby can do her job knowing she will be provided the dignity of the wage her employer promised her she would be paid. Unprecedented would be a reality where refugees and immigrants provided community power and justice so advocates like Alor and Ismaan will see the communities they serve feel safe seeing and heard. Unprecedented would be a reality where the City of San Diego affirms that black lives matter by instituting policies and practices that acknowledge and right centuries of wrongs and harms. Unprecedented would be a reality where San Diego no longer aims small but embraces our limitless potential in such a way that transforms us from America's finance city for some into a world-class city for all. A future of this sort would be unprecedented, but it is not unattainable. Our jobs, as the fortunate and privileged for you who will serve on this council, is to unite and strive for the unprecedented, where every person in every neighborhood in every district